Your folks are there, then we're gonna go ahead. It is 5:30 and officially call our board workshop for November 22nd to order 5:30, 5:31 now. Really do appreciate the opportunity that we have to come together collectively. There are several board reports that we need to walk through. You guys have been given that information, of course, in our agenda reviews and in the packets. And I also wanted just to notice because to have you note that the article in the TNT on a former Culver Park School District employee was just really remarkable to read. So you know, I'm continue to be encouraged and impressed by the people that impact our community, state and world that have come from our school district. It's encouraging. So make sure you read your all your briefs and maybe even look at some of the briefs that the school district puts out. You'll enjoy some of those articles. That being the case, I also want to just very quickly say to Alyssa, thank you. I know you're on vacation with family and that you're joining us for just the first section because you have two areas where we need, well, one area where you need to report, another area where we just need to have discussion going forward. And so I would say that in the first portion of the board report tonight was the WADA conference is very encouraging as always to get to be there. They had a different format this year. And in that format, they had the length of the general session all in one day to where you had the keynote speakers all on the same day. I'm not sure how you guys felt about that. I think I like it spread out a little bit more than all at once, but I'm always proud of people trying new things and different things to try to keep folks engaged. And the seminars, of course, were extremely helpful. And anyway, I'm just going to remind you that you need to fill out your forms and your learnings and make sure that those all get sent back in as soon as possible. So you had those documents and of course Carmen sent us those documents before we even got to WADA. Mine was in my email. So thank you Carmen being on top of that. What we want to do now is to move to the next section unless anybody else wanted to comment on WADA, but that's really what we get to do in our forums anyway. All right, well, we'll move to the discussion on the annual board reorganization. A few years ago, we decided to make sure that we had an opportunity to do this publicly instead of the last minute of a board meeting and provide an opportunity. And so I am acknowledging that that is a wise way to move things forward to go ahead and to say if there's specific things that we want to share in terms of a desire for leadership to reorg, how that's going to be. Obviously, I've loved being able to serve on this board and I won't be serving forward. So that's going to allow changes in the way that we do our reorg. So you folks and our new incoming board director are going to be able to navigate that and decide who you want to select to be able to lead your officers. But if you have certain things you want to share, this is the time that we'd want to hear from you. And if you just raise your hand, that makes it really easy on me to call you so that we don't inadvertently step on each other. Go ahead, Alyssa.
Figure out how to unmute myself here. Okay, I'll just, I guess, start with the legislative rep, I guess. I think Anthony, I think you're doing a really good job. I don't know if you want to continue doing it. I feel like you need more than a year to really get going on it. So you know, I would be happy if you would want to continue doing that, but obviously, you know, you're I'd like to hear what you have to say, but I just think you know, you're, I think you're trying to get the hang of it. And I think some additional time would be good on that that piece.
And then Anthony, did you want to comment on that? You want to weigh in?
Yes. Uh, you know, I definitely appreciate the opportunity and I think it's definitely informative and I've been learning a ton during during this time period, even just through this last event with WADA. Been able to meet some good folks that kind of helped explain a little bit more about the legislative position. And oh yeah, there's just so, so much information. As like they have said in the past, like a fire hydrant, you know, spraying you. So definitely a lot there. I'm more than happy to continue. Just the in the simple fact that there's so much to be learned and I just love the education that is behind it. And then I think, you know, getting to know this position even more can just really, really help us as a board too. So that's, that's what I'm really looking forward to. So we'll see what the the future has to behold for it. But nonetheless, I'm willing to, you know, dive deep and and make that commitment.
And again, just because there's public on, of course, that we're all's we're doing is making sure that we've had appropriate discussion and transparent ones and looking at it, all these decisions will be made in a in our next board meeting. Any other thoughts and questions you folks on the reorg? And you can just physically raise your hand. I can see if you do that. You don't have to be as astute as Alyssa know how to do it in your cool little screen. Anyone else that wants to weigh in, please feel free to.
I'm gonna I'll just put this out there. I think this year has been a very different year by all means. I would suggest and I would like to consider that we have a team of Alyssa and I chairing the meetings. I certainly want to help Alyssa mentor Alyssa, and I think that we've kind of proven that we can work together. So I'm hoping that that can be something that we can move forward with. Just saying.
It's so good to put the discussion out on the table. That's what we need to do.
Yeah. I'd definitely be open to that. You know, it's been a honor being the vice president and you know, just however it is that we need to move the district forward. There's a lot of work to be done. When you think about it, it seems like a monumental task. But it's important and we have to keep moving forward and trying to get the community to come back together. As as we've mentioned, it does seem like it's pretty divided right now. So school district is the cornerstone of the community and yeah, it's important that we move things forward in a positive direction. And however, I can be a part of that. I'm happy to be.
Anthony.
You know, I'd just like to speak on as well. Just just from my experience and getting to see the positions played out. I, in my opinion, I think it might be really good if, you know, I, from my thoughts, I would, I would consider, you know, Alyssa to be the the next president. And I think that would be something that I could see happening. And I think it would be a positive influence, not just for the board, but for the community as well. Yes, she's newer to the board, but I think with the right guidance as well from Carol and just our teammates alone. You know, that will just help elevate her and put her in the position to really be a good success as as a president. And I know she's been great to work with, easy to communicate with. If there are disagreements, she's not just one sided. She'd like to hear both sides. So that is something that I can really appreciate. And and see as good, good leadership, you know, so I think moving forward, that's, that's something that I would be excited to to see with the the board and the reorganization.
Thank you, Anthony. And and again, I'm reserving comments in any ways of particulars because you know, that's not going to be my place. What I can say on a generic standpoint is how exciting it is for me and and I hopefully, you know, Paul and Carol, as well as people who've been on the board longer and we're older people to see the you two younger folks. And I mean that in the most positive way, really stepping up and elevating your ability to connect with the community and to provide leadership. And so it's very exciting for me to see you do that into also, as you said, Anthony, be able to lean into the experience that comes from the whole team. But I think that was very well said, Anthony.
Thank you, Anthony. Yes, it's always awkward to get compliments about yourself. Thank you. And it is a team effort. It really is. So I just hope we can work together as a collective team moving forward. That's important to me.
Any other comments?
Alyssa, moving collectively is is fine, but moving collaboratively is what is really paramount now. And just in the conversations that we've had, I really like being the role of a mentor and you know, there's really not a whole lot in the last 25 years that I have an experience that I want to share and work with and help you grow too. So that's kind of my position. I will admit it's like I had to think about it for a little bit, but I think that if you will continue to use me as a mentor and it's fine with me.
Well, it'll be exciting for you.
Anyone, I mean, who everyone, I mean, 22 years on the board, I think is, I mean, that's a lot of experience. So I'm just like, I always appreciate input and feedback and I you know, you have to learn by jumping into it. You know, I think about you, I have a new job and I just, and my last job, I just jump into it and you kind of figure it out as you go and ask for help along the way. And it's kind of my motto in life and it seems to be working out so far. So hopefully that continues.
And and my, what I really disdain is I promise you, and I promise the board, I will not be saying well, the olden days or well, when, but it's good to have history. It's good to bring that perspective because if we've tried something and we have experience on that, I want to share the experience and the outcomes as opposed to nah, that's old stuff. We've been there, done that. So it's exciting and I think we have a lot to go, but we have a lot to do in the next year, lots to do. And one of those is hoping that we really can get the schools functioning as we know schools are, but even after the WADA convention. It's kind of doubtful that schools will ever be what schools were. So it's going to be a learning curve. Every year is going to be a new learning curve, new problems and new solutions that our students are going to be looking forward to and our parents are going to be looking for to us to make sure that we provide those that are best for children because they are who we serve.
Well, board, what we do know, what we've been saying is that we get to model what we want our students to be. We, you know, we get to be the the leadership that models a student's success. And I really appreciate the reality of it is, is as we come together as collaborative problem solvers, that is one of the, you know, the key factors of what we're trying to put forward. So thank you for this collaborative conversation. If there's not anything more, I'm gonna give you guys a few more seconds, then we'll move to our next area of discussion. Our next area of discussion is on the public comment section. You know, we had input from WADA, from the executive director, Tim Garchaw, as well on ways that we might be able to improve it. We were all kind of hit off you know, a little bit off center with the need to be virtual, the need to, you know, quote unquote pivot, to be hybrid, to be able to go in different directions. And so it really has been a learning year. And we've done our best to create a way that we make sure that we provide for a voice and also an opportunity to do the work of a board. And so those are our two key elements. And so what we did is we created a subcommittee. And we asked both Alyssa and Carol to look at it and to give us a report back on areas that might improve what we're doing, both in terms of the effectiveness of our board and then the solidifying of a of processes. So Alyssa and or Carol, would you guys begin sharing your subcommittee report, please?
Yeah. I don't know if you want me to go, Carol, are you?
Even before we start saying anything, I think it's really important to note that this has been something that's been in the works since actually, I think definitely September, yeah, since September. And so this is not a recent activity. This is not something that's just started. It's just actually, we've been actually talking about it since August. So and and September, I believe we turned in the recommendations. And so now I think we're ready to talk about it as we said at the workshop. And and now we're ready to roll it out. So do you want to go first, Alyssa, or do you want me to mention one of them or?
Sure, I can go. Yeah, we currently chatted about this for a while. And so I know that there was some concern about the time limit last time. And I think it's important to note that we had a lot of speakers and we were still significant, like quite a bit under the one hour mark. And then speaking or hearing from Tim Garchaw, they, he mentioned usually it's 45 minutes long for most school districts. So the hour was actually longer than the majority of school districts at the standard in Washington. You know, I don't necessarily have a strong preference on the time or the time limit myself. However, it's usually good to have a guideline. And then if something happens, like if there's a you know, you need to extend it, but if, you know, we all know that we usually say three comments on one side and three comments on the other. And then after that point, people sometimes repeat the same thing. And so it, you know, we do as a board have the option to say, okay, we have three from this side, three from that side. So putting the timeline on it was more of like, okay, more, more people can speak, even if it's on the same topic. So there's kind of give and takes to every way that what option you go with. But you know, we're thinking if we put a time limit in there, we can always change it. It's more so to just to keep the meeting on track and moving forward. But as you could see, there's a lot of comments that can be said in an hour. Because not everyone uses their full three minutes and some people do, and it just depends on on the given meeting. And then we are going to recommend doing away with the written comments and instead allow for virtual comments. You know, if you've watched the city council meetings, they allow people to raise their hand virtually and speak and and I, you know, Carol and I spoke and we do think it's time to move it in that direction because when it, when someone writes a letter, as we have seen, it can get lost in translation because people write to the board and they don't want their comment written read at a public meeting. So we get, we get comments from the public. They do not want it to be a part of the board meeting, but what was happening was people were writing emails, not, not specifically stating that they wanted it read at a public as a public comment. And then there was frustration and we do not want there to be frustration with public comment. And so we think removing the written comments and plus you're not giving the tone of voice. It's just totally different when we're reading it versus the individual who wrote it is reading it. So if we just allow people to either write in the chat that they want to speak or just raise their hand like I did, there's a raise the hand feature. You know, they can give be given the same amount of time, the three minutes that that you get in person and that's probably just better. You don't have to come to the board meeting. You don't have to get your comment submitted. Sorry, in person board meeting, you do have to come to the board meeting, but virtually. And I just think that that will be better. And then Carol, did you want to talk about the time? The three, the
Yes. And I just want to reiterate with Alyssa, you know, if she read something and I read the exact same thing, we use a different tone, we put punctuation in different places. You could have very be interpreted with different intent. So I, I do think as long as our Zoom people, Zoom audience has a chance to speak, I think that's what's really important. Not just in the last couple of months, but in through the years, this is a history moment. I think having when when somebody's speaking and then somebody else comes up and they want to defer their three minutes to the person who just spoke, I think that's fine. Sometimes I've seen it go on for two, three, even up to five times. And I, both Alyssa and I are recommending that we have allow one deferred comment back to a previous speaker. So if I get up and speak and I have a, Alyssa's going to defer her three minutes to me, then I can speak for an additional three minutes. If Anthony or Paul wants to come on and speak for three minutes, they need to speak their piece and it's not going to be deferred back to me. So it's like you can defer what you get a total of six minutes with a deferring.
So what you're saying is you, you would want to allow one deferral?
One deferment, yes.
And usually, I, I, not usually, maybe I'm going kind of off the city council as well because I've watched a lot of their meetings where if they're a group, I believe they get like five minutes or even six, like double the time. They get a group a minute. So kind of when you defer is kind of the group.
Right.
I don't want to say mentality. I'm not really sure what the word I'm looking for really, but you know, kind of like the group time limit because you know, as it stands now, you could defer your time 10 times and right, I mean, we don't have any, anything stating what the rules are on that.
And this would also hold true.
The rule that you do have is that the president officer is the one who gets to monitor that. And what was interesting, I did, you know, I did everything I could always to make sure that we allow for public comment, but the public comment is a opportunity that the board gives to the public. It's the board meeting and we really want to make sure that we do get to hear. And so in the deferments knows things at some point when we've really heard or like what you were saying earlier, Alyssa, once you've heard three people on one side, three on the other side. And you know, there's not a whole lot of extra things being added to that comment. And so you, you are getting to hear their points and you've heard those points. And so I would think that I like your idea of a, of a deferment that at that point, you know, how many times would you defer it? And aren't you, you're really going to hear the same things over and over?
I think in the past, the longest period of deferment has oftentimes been around schools getting close and we don't have a contract yet. So we have lots of parents deferring and we have a lot of staff members deferring to their union reps. So I just think universally for everybody involved, one deferment per speaker. That way it doesn't, it keeps the conversations going of different topics. And I think that's fair.
So yeah, those are recommendations. We just think, you know, we kind of allowed, we were scrambling at the beginning of COVID and the written comment was added in there to give people the opportunity and it's just probably not the best practice moving forward. And I just think that there was frustration create created from it and on both ends for sure of, you know, well, you know, I don't know, this will eliminate that and allow actually for more people to speak if they wanted to, because you just jump on Zoom and raise your hand and I, you know, you don't have to worry about the clock striking 5:30 or whatever it is to get your public comment emailed in.
I also am recommending, I would like to recommend that you know, the three minutes comes up and without oftentimes if you're in a bay, you get notices that, oh, it's 15 seconds or 30 seconds. I would suggest because we have our three minute time period, some people adhere to it and say, thank you very much and stop. Some people feel like they have more to say and they don't stop. I think if we have a beldering or some kind of notice that you have 15 seconds and in those 15 seconds, it's kind of wrap it up. So I think that, you know, if we have a way, so two minutes and 45 seconds indicating that the three minutes is almost up and at three minutes, then the conversation needs to be completed and concluded. The other thing is the Zoom is not going to go away. I, I, these, these virtual meetings are not going to go away. And the good of that is this. For years and years and years, we've talked about how do we get participants into our meeting? How do we get people? How do we, how does our, we get our community here? Continuing to do it and allowing the community to speak in public comment by raising their voice, by raising their hand and talking actually does allow us to keep broader, deeper lines and more lines of communication open.
And yeah. Even if COVID, you know, whenever it chooses to end, I think the virtual option is still great. Personally for myself, you know, I just think you know, you're rushing to get food, you know, money, you know, food for your family or whatever you're doing. It's, you know, our meeting times are in the evening, people, activities, sports, you could jump on your phone and what, I mean, that I think that that's one of the good things that came out of COVID. Not many good things came out of it, but I think the the virtual world and moving a little bit more technology based is a positive. And and I agree with, well, obviously I agree with Carol because we chatted about it, but giving a warning, it does seem maybe a little bit. You know, if you're speaking and you're in a groove of speaking and then the bell rings and it's like, okay, stop talking, even though it was, you were warned, it just, you know, oh gosh, I want to finish my thought. So I think that giving a warning is like, okay, let me speak really fast to finish my sentence or whatever I want to do in those last seconds, you know, whether it be 30 seconds or 15 seconds, it probably isn't as abrupt of an ending.
Well, and to finish the thought is one thing, to keep reading a paper and go on for another minute or two, which has happened, that's, that's not appropriate. And we're telling people, we want to hear from you, but we're giving you, we're letting you know what your timeframe is so that you can prepare to finish your conversation, finish your sentence. And and thank you, you know, thank you very much. One of the things that Tim Garchaw did say and was brought up at the WADA thing. You know what? As we have asked for parent participation, the other thing is I go online and see, I'm sorry, I see more present, more principals than ever. I see more teachers than ever. I see staff. I see more us reaching out. This is a contact to our community. And I think it's a good thing.
Yeah. And I also just want to say, it's also awkward on our end. Cutting, I mean, like stopping people from speaking. I mean, it's uncomfortable. I would say most of us don't enjoy conflict and you know, some people get upset about it. And I'm just hoping that we can somehow figure out a way of a warning system and it's just better for less awkward for both sides because no one likes to be the police, same as like, you know, no one wants to be the mask police. No one wants to be the public comment police. It's just if every, and you know, if you make an exception for one person, you have to make an exception for every person. And then, and then what's the point of having guidelines? And in the first place, if you're not even going to adhere to them.
We might even want to, as we have our, we're a segment on our agenda where our public comments are, we might even want to list these so that everybody when they come and they can see them and they know them. I've, from our family, it's always been, if you know the rules, you can play the game. So if we share that with everybody, we are going to be able to move forward. And Alyssa, you're absolutely right. When you're sitting there in the president's chair, it's very awkward to say, excuse me, excuse me, your time is up, your time is up. And and that's very awkward. So by doing this, it seems a little kinder and it prepares everybody to be, to be on the same page. It's really appropriate.
Yeah. And I had to keep bringing it back to city council, but you know, when you watch their comment, I, they have like the light system. I don't know, it buzzes differently. And I just feel like it's like, okay, here's a warning, here's a warning. No one says anything. It's just a little buzzer doing its thing. I mean, I don't know if that's a possibility. I feel like it works well. I mean, I know that not everyone is going to follow the rules 100% of the time, but I don't really know what that buzzing system is that they have, but I don't know, might be something to look into.
So Marty, I would hope that you guys would cheer, cheering him. Paul and Anthony, please let us know how you feel about these suggestions. And it's nothing that we really have to vote on, but it's something that we have to, I think, agree and understand too.
Yeah, we want everyone to feel comfortable.
And have a say.
Yeah.
Go ahead, Anthony. And then I noticed Paul took himself off mute, so he may want to speak as well.
Yeah, I think these suggestions and ideas are really good. It's definitely important. We want to hear the community. We have to hear it. You know, that's how we can learn as well and collaborate together. It's so important. But having some type of indication of, okay, you know, yeah, there's five minutes or five seconds left, 10 seconds left, some type of countdown would would be important. I think that would help. Just with, you know, I've, I've done speaking plenty of times myself and sometimes you get in the moment and you're passionate and you just want to keep on going and you got that one last thing you want out there that was almost your keynote. You know, and then it gets cut off and you're like, oh, I didn't even get to my whole point of my story here. So that could be a real bummer too. So in other words, if you could see In other words, if you could see or even have that little ding of, you know, yep, ten seconds left and I think that would be helpful. Uh, maybe another good idea too is actually even having a stop. You know, timer there, uh, maybe on a screen as as easy as that could be. And that once again could really help. I don't know if people in the past have felt like, oh. Did I actually get my three whole minutes or did I get, you know, ripped off in in a sense? So definitely don't want anybody to feel that way either. So uh, that might be another good, good way to go about it. Um, I thought it was interesting um, at Wazda. I did talk to, you know, plenty of other school board members and. I know there was even the avenue of no public comment, which which was like a shocking thing to me, but. That's actually something that is possible and doable as as a board. Not saying that I'm suggesting that by any means, but it it's definitely an option that we have as a board. Um, which was uh, something that that I just learned, but um, but anyhow. Uh, carrying on with with our procedures and what we would like to see happen, I think, yeah, having a little bit of a countdown be fantastic. So tho- those are my ideas and thoughts.
And I actually really like your idea of the stop watch. That that might even be. Better than the buzzer. I think on virtual, I'm not a hundred percent sure, but I think there is a way to do a countdown. Don't quote me on that. Maybe it's not on Zoom. But yeah, I don't know if there's a way to do it, but I agree with you. Sometimes even I sit up there and. Three minutes seems longer, three minutes seem shorter. I don't know. And of course, I know that. Carmen knows how to do three minutes. My point is I, I can see where you're like, oh, was that three minutes where if it's just up there? Everyone's on the same page. Know what's coming, maybe no one to skip something and head on to the, a different page. So I really like that.
Well, I I think yes, the question is, is why do we even have public comment? You know, Anthony's kind of touched on that. You can go everything from nothing to something. And I, and from my perspective, we represent the community and if we don't listen to them. I I would say if I was an outsider looking today at what was said here. We we only talked about how to limit conversation instead of inviting conversation. So I think our conversation should have been, in my opinion. Um, of some ways that we could put together that would allow the community to feel comfortable. Communicating tasks and ways to do that. I I think, um, you know, we don't take commi- uh, comments right now in work sessions, but I think. That's probably the place where we should have had citizens involved before we come to a vote. So that the work session is where we prepare our agenda. We sit down and talk about our agenda. Uh, and we have public comment at that point in time and there, so the work session could be broken into. Into categories of what we're going to discuss and we hear from the community, what they think about some of this stuff. And and it gives us a chance to fold that in. We could either have delay a vote that we do in the next meeting. Or we could just add, or maybe we could do something different. Maybe we could have a a citizen uh, listening session. Or a staff listening session or maybe more research. But I think what we, what from my perspective, what we're trying to do here. Is we want our community to know that we care and that we listen. And anytime we put things in that restrict. How they communicate to us, I think sends the wrong message. Thank you.
And I can appreciate that, except we did just. Recommend changing it so people could speak on Zoom. So I don't necessarily agree with that we are working on ways to. Limit the community because Carol and I specifically wanted to make it so more people have the option. To come to meetings and speak, which was the purpose of the Zoom, which isn't available now. So. Um, I would say that that is, we're not li- limiting it there, we're expanding it. And I can appreciate your comments on the workshop. I personally have never heard of public comment at a workshop. I could be wrong, but. Usually workshops are the, for the board to discuss things. I I I could be wrong. I'm definitely willing to look into it. I have never heard of that. But if someone else has, feel free to chime in.
Alyssa, I I I I have never heard of it either. And I think I, Anthony, the one thing about not having, I'm totally against not having any public comment. Because you know what? If we don't hear what people are thinking, then we're really working in a silo. Not only that, but what else do we hear? We hear, we hear the good news. We hear about coming events. Um, Diane Fermosa always comes and talks about her caring for kids activities, back to school things. We've had. Boys and Girl Scouts in our audience and they come up because that's part of, part of one of their badge work that they need to be doing. So. I, it's it's about the good, it's about all this. It's about all the things that people are concerned about, things that people are happy about. Things that people want to, want us to. Be informed on, on times and and dates and things like that. So. I was really surprised when I heard about some school districts not having public comment. Um, I thought, wow, I I it just seems like there's a real. It just takes away a lot. So um. I definitely would keep it. I definitely like to have it in the format um, that we have. I like, you know. I think we are having more people having the opportunity for people to feel comfortable coming in on Zoom. Um, how now, how that works out. We've got a great IT department and I know they can. Help us get things figured out. I think that's where it goes. I don't know. So.
Yeah, I think you can just like. Click next to their name and allow them to speak and then. Um, you don't like add them as a panelist. I think you can just allow them to be a speaker and then you just. Move it back. Oh, yeah, Bron, am I wrong?
You're not wrong at all. I just want to make sure I interject. That if there's an element of a limited timeframe, right? Like if you said it's a maximum of sixty minutes or a maximum of forty-five minutes. Then there would need to be a logistic of a sign in sheet for those that are in person and some way to sign in for those that are virtual. As opposed to just raising your hand. If we were all virtual, then we'd still want a way to say. We went down a list and objectively called on people, right? Um, and so if it were hybrid in person and virtual, then we'd want two lists and we'd probably want to go A, B, A, B. Right? So in person, virtual, person, virtual. So again, we objectively. Allowed for the comments to take place. I just want to keep that in there as a.
That's a really good point. And you can add in the. Chat or whatever, you know, so we could say like, hey, if you want to speak, just put your name. In the chat and then that would create the list, right? If they sent it and then you could go one and one, one, you know. Um, back and forth.
The other thing, I was on the understanding and this was at looking at a communication session that I went to. That in fact, this is not a voted item because this is work of the board. And so the board is supposed to set up how this board is supposed to work. So I do not believe that we need to vote on this. This is something that as, that's what, this is a perfect workshop topic. We we talk it out. We we move, we don't vote on it, but we get a consensus of where we want to go. And so I don't think this is a voted on item. From what I learned just last week.
Usually some committees are not like, but I don't know. I mean, I'm I'm not opposed to.
Well, I I sat through the legal conference and they, they spent quite a bit of time, probably a third of the time at the legal conference on last Thursday. And if if you have public comment. Uh, you have some real serious First Amendment things that you need to consider. And if you mess that up, just stand by to be sued. So just just remember uh, that if you're going to do it, so there there could be some validity. You know, depending on how fearful you are about not doing it at all. But if you're going to do it, you better make sure you understand the First Amendment rights.
Yeah, well, I think that we all agree that we do want to have public comment. I think Anthony, you were just putting that out there as an example of what some boards are doing. Am I correct? You're not proposing.
No, Paul's saying we better do it right, or I don't know, someone's going to sue us, which, okay, well, everyone. In the history of school boards and city council have guidelines around public comment, not a free for all. And I agree that people have the right to speak at a board. I am one hundred percent against taking that away. I would never vote to take it away. But I do believe that there should be guidelines. So that's where I stand.
Yeah, I'd like to chime in too. Um, yeah, I just want to make it absolutely hundred percent clear. That it is not the direction I would like to go in. I I enjoy and want to hear from the community. Um, so I think that is as blatant as I can get it. Uh, I think the way that we're going about it is uh. It it it's good, you know, we're trying to be fair. We're trying to work it out so that we can create even more fairness and and. That's wonderful. I I appreciate this conversation a hundred percent. But yeah, I was completely shocked. That that was even an option um, as a board though.
Yeah.
And I think Anthony, it had to do because, you know, as we were listening to people, it really came down to civility and so. Sometimes what we think is that if I can be really loud and aggressive, then I'm going to be heard better than if I'm. You know, practicing civility. And so I think a lot of the guidelines are to make sure that we have a process to where everybody gets to come together, be civil and share things that are important to them. And when you move beyond civility, then that's when the guidelines really have to be enacted. And I think that there's many ways that we have in the past. Been very proactive. We've done great at being proactive and trying to increase student voice. And increasing parent voice and community voice, which leads me to our our next uh, speak out when the time is right is uh, update on CELT. But we, we as a board have been fantastic about. Uh, seeking to make sure that we hear from our community, that we take um. The time to create groups and. Go out, not just even ask them to come to us. So. Paul's right. In fact, it's it's more than just trying to say, okay, this is how you need to behave when you can speak to us. We do need to always make sure that we are moving in that direction of positively seeking input from our community. So you guys get to figure it all out. Alyssa and Carol's a great sub report. Anything else you want to conclude on?
No, I think it's just important to remember that not everyone is going to agree with the guidelines. It's a very sensitive subject. You cannot make everyone happy. I would love to. I would love to make everyone happy. I actually am um, a people pleaser. I just enjoy. People getting along and being happy. That's who I am, but that's just not realistic. Not everyone is going to agree on a time limit. On how it's done. Maybe they want it to remain written comment instead of virtual or being in person. You just cannot make a hundred percent of people happy. We're, we're trying to make options available, virtual and in person. So more people get the opportunity to speak. There isn't a deadline for when you get, have to get it in and just. Make it very clear because I think when COVID started, there was some. You know, i- it seemed clear, but it obviously wasn't because some people were a bit frustrated with how things were done. We're hoping we can clear that up. We're hoping that this is, we can move forward positively and with a new. Still, you know, a lot of the same rules, but this new virtual in-person hybrid public comment.
Now, I I like to comment that, you know, sometimes we look at things and we we see the hardship of it. And in this case, it really did open up the door to virtual uh, opportunities and options. And so that. That is a wonderful thing. It can come out of something hard. And I I still think that sometimes we, if we look at our boardroom and then also take a, a look in our classrooms. This, the way that we conduct ourselves is the way that we want our classrooms to be conducted. Where there's a learning collaborative environment where we're seeking to learn, understand each other and grow together and. Uh, as has already been mentioned, collaborative problem solver. So that's, that's the healthy environment that we're really trying to see. Are we ready to move on to the last board report? So we can get to the superintendent's report?
Yes, and I'm just, well, I'll stay on for this last one and then I'll.
Thank you for staying this long. And the last one is very quick. It's just the CELT update that we've been asked to do and. Uh, CELT is the Community Engagement Leadership Team and we're reminded that. That's been one of our outreach uh, opportunities that we have to make sure that we are listening and creating partnerships. Uh, with our stakeholders in our community. And so that has continued. Uh, we've been able to have meetings. We had an opportunity to meet at Pierce College to really look at. To take a a deep look with the CELT team as well as other agency leaders on. Uh, just exactly what is equity? How how does it impact individuals and how can we come together to learn uh, from one another in that? And so it 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 is uh, moving forward and it's a great way to do what Paul was suggesting uh, earlier, which is to make sure that we invite. The community to bring their voice to the work of the school district. So it's it's been very good. So I, I'm appreciative of it. And it'll be interesting to continue to see some of the new people with the uh, Garrison Commander change. Uh, be involved, uh, because, you know, I don't ever want us to forget. That we have a city larger than our city right next to us, you know, JBLM. There's a lot of people and there are six schools of our community. On JBLM and we work very hard uh, to make sure that we have great relationships and that we're learning uh, from one another. Their level of excitement was fantastic in terms of what can we do to make sure that we can collaborate? Are there barriers that we need to look at so that the uh, military and the, you know, civilian community have the. You know, bridges that make it easier to interact. That was some of the last discussions that we had. So that's kind of where CELT's going. Any questions or insights from you folks? If that's the case, we'll uh, do two things. We'll say, Alyssa, thank you so much for taking time when. You're on family vacation. We appreciate you. Thank you for the subcommittee report, the work that you and Carol did. And uh, we'll see you later and then we'll ask you to be aware of that, the rest of it, uh, that's going to be reported. You have an opportunity to go back and. Uh, listen and learn and ask questions on it as well. Thank you.
Bye. Thank you.
Superintendent Banner, would you please move us to your reports from your uh, staff, please?
Yes, we have three reports this evening. So I'll ask Carmen if you can bring Deputy Superintendent Brian LaBaw. Director Leanna Albrecht and Assistant Superintendent Kevin Akata into the room here. And so we will have a brief academic recovery update with regards to COVID. All things COVID. Um, we will also um, be following up with uh, the Gymnasium Naming. Committee, which the board had charged the district with um, just about two months ago. And we will also look at the Mascot Naming Committee as an update to the board. So we'll start with Deputy Superintendent LaBaw. It is your floor and you can share the screen as you need.
All right. Thank you, Board President, Board Members and Superintendent for an opportunity to provide an update of our recovery. For the month of November. So I'll take questions at the end as usual. So tonight, just a quick update on a vaccine clinic we had, just to keep pressing a reminder about. Close contacts, uh, some new contact tracing support we have. Um, and then update on volunteers and some academic updates. So we are pleased with a partnership we have with the Lakewood-based Genoa Health Clinic. Um, they provided staff and vaccine doses to support a vaccine clinic this past Saturday. Um, a total of three hundred and twenty-two community members were served. The breakdown of vaccinations um, or uh, a hundred and sixty-three Pfizer vaccines for ages five through eleven. Forty-nine Pfizer vaccines for those twelve and older. Um, they gave out or provided ninety-four flu vaccine doses and then provided sixteen Moderna. Um, boosters. Uh, the follow-up for anybody who got their first shot. Um, on last Saturday, on the twentieth, will be December eleventh, uh, which is a very busy day in Lakewood. But this will be one of the events going on. So just a reminder about who are considered close contacts. This is in your packet. I'm not going to spend too much time. On this, you know, we spend a lot of time figuring out whether a a person's vaccinated or not. Um, and if they've maintained six foot um, distance or greater if they aren't vaccinated. Or if you're a student of three feet or greater and are masked. We did um, get the opportunity to partner with Tacoma Pierce County Health Department. And a national company, AM um, L L C dot com. Um, to provide contact tracers and contact investigators. So last week on Friday. Um, three contact tracers began uh, to support our building COVID managers with phone calling. To close contacts who need to quarantine due to their exposure at school. After Thanksgiving break, um, we're hopeful that a couple COVID investigators will be on site to assist with identifying close contacts. Um, technically this direct support. Um, is to end on December thirty-first. However, they're pretty confident that um, the opportunity. that the opportunity for the additional assistance will be extended. As we know from past experience, COVID cases have traditionally spiked after major holidays, gatherings and travel. So they work with our COVID Response Coordinator and Specialists. Again, we keep putting out there, right, about just not coming to school when you're feeling sick or sick. And when, what to do when you don't feel well, right, to stay home, right? If you develop symptoms that you cannot attribute to an alternative health diagnosis. So we continue to provide that message out to our staff. We'll be presenting to our building COVID managers next week on Wednesday to go over parts of this presentation that they can share. Again, just kind of putting that out there. Oops, went too far. And then also about when you are identified as a close contact, you know, you can come to work or to school if you're fully vaccinated. However, if you develop any of those COVID-like symptoms, you need to get tested and then stay home. And it just kind of a chart that explain what are considered Class A symptoms and Class B symptoms. The left-hand side here, the Class A, if you have one of those, you're to stay home and get tested. It takes two or more of the Class B symptoms. Just recently, they moved cough. So it's second down on the Class A on this chart. It used to be over on Class B. They've moved cough over to Class A. If you can't attribute that to some other symptom or other health diagnosis that you have, if you have a persistent cough or you're coughing a lot, that, that has moved into the Class A symptoms. And we were still continuing to do our testing at our center over at the Harry Ealing Pickett Booth, where students or staff can get tested on day five or six. And then as long as they get a negative test, they can come back to school or work. Our fully vaccinated close contacts can continue to come to work or school and can be tested five to seven days after exposure if they feel comfortable in doing that. Otherwise, it's not mandatory. But if they do develop any of those symptoms we saw on the previous chart, they would do, do need to go get tested. We have launched our volunteer system in Raptor. It is now live on the district webpage. It can be found under Get Involved. The application is also in Spanish from that link. And the volunteer handbook can be found on the webpage, the District Volunteer Handbook. People who are volunteering in the buildings need to be cleared through that online system. There's a couple of things that they will need to do when they come to the school site in terms of showing that they've completed the additional work that's in about boundary, boundaries and reporting. Those things are additional lessons that volunteers will complete. And then also they need to show that they are vaccinated. Only volunteers who are fully vaccinated are allowed to volunteer. We're still working on our visitor application within Raptor. And in the meantime, visitors will continue to sign in and sign out of school in the visitor logs. Last week, as you know, we had parent teacher conferences. They are virtually pre-K through 12th grade. We had students, secondary families receive their students' first quarter grade progress reports last week. And then our first semester ends on January 27th, 2022. Elementary students will receive, or elementary families will receive their students' first progress reports on December 10th. Those will be hand carried home after trimester ends on December 3rd. We have completed all the state and district administrations for the fall. During January, the district star assessment will be administered to our students K5. Spring smarter balance testing for the 21-22 school year will begin in April with all secondary schools. That's the end of my report.
Brian, thank you very much. And we will entertain questions here. I wanted to make sure I understand a couple of things myself as well on this. In that, you know, we just got back from WASD, as you probably heard us reporting. And at WASD, they, we were required to, you know, show, even just to get in, we had to show that we've been vaccinated and they had different ways that you could do that in advance even through a third-party company. And it really did make it convenient if you took a little time up, you know, in advance. It just made the whole process go a lot smoother. So one of the comments that, you know, I wanted to make is that this, you know, a lot of us are still in that place of wanting to go back to normal. The reality is, is that we're not going back to normal that no longer exists. There's different things that we have to do now to walk our way through the COVID and the requirements and the requirements. But I just want to make sure people understand these aren't the Clover Park School District Board of Directors making these requirements.
Correct.
These are state Department of Health that we're required to follow and to give evidence that we are following. And in that, I also want to acknowledge that if I understood the report correctly, and I want to make sure I'm saying this, our other board directors ask questions along these lines, stupid, but I understood what you were sharing in your report and being able to look at it in advance. A lot of these activities are things that educators have been doing. And now we're doing a third-party contract with some of these to take that off the plates of some of our principals and admins in terms of the contact tracing. If I understood that correctly. And it just reminds me exactly what WASD did by having a third-party do it so that you can do the business of WASD. You're not doing all the business of COVID, so to speak. So just want, and then the other thing is, is on the vaccines that were, that you shared. My understanding is that that was a fully voluntary opportunity for some people actually want to be vaccinated. Some people want their children vaccinated, but that wasn't a requirement and it wasn't us. Because there's a lot of people that are fearful that we're going to make, you know, children get vaccinated. Again, these are state things. But at this point, it was completely a voluntary opportunity made available to the public. Did I get that right?
Correct. Yes, totally voluntary.
Okay. All right. So Board, go ahead, Paul.
Brian, on, when you're having, was it volunteers or helpers come in? You said that they'll have to wear a mask at all times. If they're drinking coffee or drinking or eating, is they, do they have that exception or not?
Right. As, as long as you're in a, you know, what we do for students and adults is they have to be six feet apart. So if, if they're eating or drinking, so if you're in the staff lounge, perhaps you can go there and eat and maintain six feet social distancing. It's really when you break that barrier while you're eating or drinking coffee, let's say, or water. That's when we get a close contact. So then we have to go through that whole other procedure that Marty was just referring to with our contact tracers and contact investigators.
So we, I would say that it probably needs a little clarification, some clarification then so that people know that, because it says all times, that that's not 100% true. You, you, I think the exception should be listed out there so people know. And, and you know, what, what they did at WASD, when you're sitting around the table eating, that you were inside the, the three-foot rule at the tables you're sitting at without, and without a mask. So for some people, when they're eating, the distance thing goes down. But from what I'm hearing from you is, is that we still need to maintain some distance and it's very strict when you don't have your mask on.
Right. And that's, you know, we're following guidance from Department of Health that's put out for K-12 schools, right? So we may, as Marty kind of referenced, we have some fairly strict rules to operate as a school and a school district, which may be entirely different than when you go to a restaurant or to a convention.
But, but you're bringing in volunteers now. New, it, it, it just, they, they may in their mind think, well, it's the same and it's not. So I would make that clear is all I'm saying.
Carol, you had your hand up as well. Thank you, Paul.
Um, I know that it's, that it's good for parents who want to volunteer in their kid's school to be able to do so. And I know it's also helpful for teachers to have parents in their capacities that they assist in the classrooms. As a parent who did a lot of that, I, there weren't very many situations where I was there to eat or drink anything. And I'm a little concerned because when you look at our students, they often, they will, because not all of them have been vaccinated. In fact, when you look at how many we spent last week versus how long this has been going on, they're still our very vulnerable citizens. And I think that we cannot drop our guard. So I'm, I, I would rather err on being very cautious, especially for kids who are under the age of 12, who have not had a lot of opportunities to get, to get the vaccination. I did appreciate this weekend when Tim made the comment because it kind of takes the burden off us. You know, our job is for governance and for policy and for budget. We're not the health department. And it was like, he got a round of applause on that because this is not, whether I disagree with it or whether I agree with it, it's not my decision to make. We have to follow the law. So when we're looking at back at the volunteers, I know parents are wanting to get into their classrooms, teachers want to have them back. I think it's more important that we say what is best for all, for most of our, for, for majority of our kids, and that is not to have anybody around them for whatever reason may not be vaccinated. And even a vaccinated person still can carry COVID, but not have the illness. And so to be in a school where kids are so vulnerable, we still have to be very, very cautious and tell majority of our kids, I think we're at 92% as a, a Pierce County has got a very high vaccination rate and tell our students are comparable in that rate. We have to be more cautious still. And I, I know that staff is, was looking forward to welcoming those volunteers to, for reading groups and, and things like that. So this will be good news for parents and staff.
The clarification also is that we are not going to open the floodgates for parents or anybody to flow into the building. We still have approval, you know, volunteers still have to go through what I believe we have is a pretty stringent approval process. And, and that's more than what Ryan was just talking about in terms of the system that we have in to monitor and track. So we are looking to take steps towards a new normal because we're not going to ever be back to where things exactly were before. We'll make some mistakes and that's just the part of venturing into new territory. So we will make some mistakes, but we will be extremely cautious. We, you know, principals, it's not going to be every classroom has a volunteer. So we will be selective in terms of not who, but what we need volunteers for. And, and we'll be very cautious. But again, we have to begin to venture outside of this bubble within the guidance, as Brian said, that K-12, DOH provides for K-12, which is more strict than going to a restaurant or to the movement, et cetera. So we'll definitely be maintaining an element of caution as we start to take what we call discovery steps towards our post-COVID, hopefully.
So the other thing, so on the December 11th vaccination time, this is for the, the second booster primarily, or will other kids who haven't received their first be able to come and receive their first?
No, it'll be for the second shot of the dose.
Will the district be offering any other vaccination opportunities? But I mean, and, and you know what I appreciate is doing this. I know there are other places that people are getting their vaccinations. My daughter made sure that her kids were and, and so, but we're only halfway there, of course. So getting the second one is very important. Thank you for making that happen. We just need to make sure that parents know that we want your kids safe.
You know, the Lakewood Clinic here that's in the old dress barn in the Lakewood Town Center does the vaccinations 12 and above. They do the booster shot. That's where my wife and I got our booster shot on Saturday. It was at the Town Center Clinic. And the four, five to 11, that clinic requires a reservation or appointment, but pretty easy to do from the Tacoma Pierce County Health Department website.
Do our parents know about that? Has that been broadcast that that's available, another option? The more information we can put out, the better we are.
Yes, we drive that information out regularly.
Okay. Thank you.
All right. Well, Superintendent Banner, I think we've been able to hear and respond to the first report. Thank you very much.
All right. I would now like to bring in Leanna Albrecht, Director for Marketing and Community Relations. And Leanna is going to be speaking to us with regards to the board-driven task of looking at the potential for naming Clover Park High School Gymnasium. Leanna, the screen is yours.
Just going to reshare again, so it's correct. One moment, I'm just having technical difficulties.
While you're working through the technical difficulties, I just wanted to tell you how amazing it is to even just see that photo and be reminded of this amazing man who poured so much of his life into those students. It's very heartfelt. And thank you for bringing that picture.
That's awesome. So thank you Superintendent Banner and Board President Schaefer and Board of Directors. So I am going to provide you with an update on the district's review of the recommendation to name the Clover Park High School Gymnasium after former longtime educator and boys' basketball coach Mel Dennis. And so we created a committee that was represented by district administrators by the Clover Park High School Principal, Tim Stoltz, the athletic director, a teacher, a parent and two students who conducted their work this fall, so from September to November. And they reviewed this recommendation in alignment with District Policy 6970 naming of school, schools and facilities. So as part of their work, they developed a timeline and a process for this. It did include gathering community input through an online survey, which was first started at the school level and then expanded to Clover Park School District and the broader community. And then they also created a matrix or process to review the information and the input received. And so a little background on Mr. Dennis, he was an educator in the Clover Park School District from 1985 to 2018. So he taught for 31 years, so more than three decades at Clover Park High School. He was the Assistant Boys Basketball Coach from 1985 to 1994. And he took the reign as the head boys' basketball coach from 1995 through last season. He did lead his teams to 14 league titles and a state championship. He served as a mentor, a coach and an advocate for students during his 30-plus years in the Clover Park School District. He was inducted into the Coaches Hall of Fame of Washington in 2018 and he was a Clover Park School District Certificated Employee of the Year in 2018. He also operated a driving school in Lakewood for many years. And the committee decided as part of his work, they wanted to expand and gather community input so that they could thoroughly review the recommendation. So they did do an online survey that first, as I mentioned, sought the input of the core Clover Park High School community, which was students, staff and families. Then they expanded it out that using social media, news, et cetera. It was shared on social media about 77 times and that did include the News Tribune. There were more than 1,100 responses and those responses were overwhelmingly positive. And themes from those responses consistently shared about his commitment to students, his advocacy for students, the positive impact that he had on students, staff and others around him, his mentorship, and then many personal testimonies. Staff and others around him, his mentorship, and then many personal testimonies. And as part of the process, um, the committee answered the following questions as it looked through the data and the input it received. Was how significant, his significance to Clover Park High School, the district and to the local community. They also looked at the impact he had on student success, his commitment to equity and inclusion. And if there were special considerations that the committee need to consider as it made its decision. They also took it one step further, because we do have many outstanding educators in Clover Park School District was. What made Mr. Ninus stand out um, from other outstanding educators? And so the committee identified several examples of how Mr. Ninus has had. Um, an impact on student success and the commitment to equity and inclusion. This did include. That he held students to high standards and he helped them achieve beyond their own expectations. He removed barriers and served as a mentor to students. He took personal responsibility to get to know students and to truly understand their story. He helped all students, not just student athletes, and he gave them a chance, so he didn't give up on them. He did focus on supporting the whole student. Um, that included, you know, grades, attendance, social, emotional, um, support, character, helping them build confidence. And much more. Um, he also gave students from a diverse background and identities a platform for belonging. Leadership and acceptance. And uh, another word that was used was amazing and relentless. In connecting with families to support students. He also built bridges. In his thirty-plus years in the district, he was connected with and supported. Students at all levels as well as families and community. And as we mentioned, we took things a step further and. Truly looked at what additional uh, factors made Mr. Ninus uh, stand apart. And the committee identified the following, which is on the screen, that he was an exemplary educator, coach and mentor at Clover Park High School. He was an inspiring advocate for students and he helped remove barriers. And again, helped them achieve beyond their expectations, that he was a positive role model for students and others. And his impact reached beyond the walls of Clover Park High School. He brought students out into the community and the community into Clover Park High School. And his reach wasn't just with the local community, it was also across the state. So after careful consideration, the committee does recommend that the Clover Park High School Gymnasium. Be named in honor of former educator and coach Mel Ninus. Are there questions for me?
Yeah, Leanna, Leanna, if you can um, take the questions really left you. First of all, can I just say that that was an amazing report? Thank you so much. It was so clear of how much effort and work and comprehensive. Your team took our initiative forward to look at this. And so it just uh, it was, it was very. Heartfelt in being able to just be reminded of this amazing man. And it was also just so clear that we honored him by the process. And so thank you very much. I just want to say that upfront. And then Board, if you have any other further questions. Leanna, then please go ahead and do so. And I, uh, I saw Paul's hand up. So Paul, go ahead.
Um, what, what? I know his name is Mel Ninus. Uh, what, what are we going to call it? The Mel Ninus Memorial Gymnasium? Uh, or what, what is you recommending there?
That is a great question. Um, we didn't go as far as the specific name, we just that recommendation. So I think that's something we would work on the, the formal, formal name if it says formal. Uh, Mr. Melville Ninus.
That you have to be determined is what you're saying.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Carol, did you want to share? Go ahead.
Well, there's lots to share and um. Leanna, I appreciate the, the extent that you took this to making sure that the community also had a chance, because the one thing that. Mel did was he had his students and then they became. You know, post-students and, 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 and adults. Who had families and he stayed connected with them. He truly, it wasn't just here and now, it's for Mel, it was kind of forever. I, I appreciate this, and um, I know that there's a lot of people waiting for what kind of response. But the most important thing is when we came up with a policy on naming something, I really do appreciate the fact that. You, you, you highlighted the fact that he wasn't just a great teacher and a great coach. I mean, he is the only educator that we've had that's done that, that's gone into the Hall of Fame, who also has a state championship. So that did keep him, set him up above. Set him above what others, because we've had other suggestions when, when, you know, we've had so many people committed to Clover Park School District, but. By taking the policy and making sure that he did something kind of historic, and this is in fact, does fit that, does fit that, those guidelines. I know that this will be well received, um, and I do appreciate getting this information. Now, because of who, you know, quite frankly, everybody knows my son played for Mel. And so I, I do get a lot of input and, and from the boys, and those were Mel's boys. It was the gym that Mel built. And I know for a fact, I'm not so sure we want the Melville name, because that kind of was a secret. But we're doing the right thing for the right person for our kids. Our kids are always going to be able to go back into that school and. Go into Mel's gym. And that's a really good thing. And I also know that many of his former, former players and students. Will be there with us when this becomes official.
And I would just like to say thank you to the committee for their work on this. It was truly a committee group effort.
Absolutely. Thank you.
And then Carol, just a, a point of reference. I believe that there has been other coaches that have also done the same things. I think, I believe Coach Miller's won a state championship and also been in the Hall of Fame. But it's, it doesn't take away from the exemplary.
I said the same thing, but wait, Coach Miller, actually, Zakovich was the head coach when Lakes won their championship. As far as the ba, as the football team. So, but you know what? Don't want to take anything away from Dave, because he is, I mean, he's in the Hall of Fame and. I think those are the only two coaches that we've ever had go into the Hall of Fame. So we have, we have. We have had the opportunity for our kids to be mentored and coached by incredible people. And um, you know, Dick Zakovich is one of one, Dave Miller is still at the Rens and, and so we're just blessed, truly blessed.
Awesome. Further comments or questions? It's an exciting, exciting opportunity to get to honor people who've lived their life well and modeled what it means. To set students up for success.
It's a privilege. This is a privilege for us.
Superintendent Banner, do you have a, the next report available?
Yes, just to close out this report, uh, we will be uh, conferring with the family to um, make sure that we're. Get hitting the mark with regards to the name, and then we do plan to bring this to the board. At the uh, December thirteenth board meeting as a resolution. The next. Report will be a combination report began by Assistant Superintendent Decata and joined in by Director Leanna Albrecht. And this will be on the uh, Native American school mascots as um, came about by legis, recent legislation. So um, Assistant Superintendent Decata, the screen is yours.
Thank you. I hope everyone can see the screen. President Schaefer, members of the board, Superintendent Banner. Thank you for the opportunity to share information on the district's committee to review Native American school mascots in the Clover Park School District. And recent legislation. Recent legislation, House Bill thirteen fifty-six was passed. This prohibits the inappropriate use of Native American names, symbols or images in the public school names, mascots, logos. Or team names. The legislature, we, legislation requires school districts with inappropriate names and mascots to identify a new mascot. Or logo by December thirty-first, two thousand twenty-one. It's important to hear, adhere to this date, because it allows schools to continue to use current items and equipment. As a transition to the new name and mascot. Additionally, it allows the school district to apply for a grant from OSPI to help reimburse for the costs associated. With uh, the name change. The new mascot and process must take effect before the end of the school year. The naming committee process for schools and facilities is directly tied to Board Policy six, sixty-nine seventy. And guides the school district's naming of school facilities. While the Native American Mascot Committee is a result of state legislation. And selection is typically guided by the process within the school community. We assembled the committee to review the current legislation and recommended next steps. This committee included representatives from secondary education, Clover Park High School, Student Services. Equity and Community Engagement and Community Relations. As part of the review committee process, we spent time thoroughly reviewing and gathering input and assessing the impact for Clover Park High School. Importantly, we reached out to the Office of the Superintendent of Public Instruction and Local Tribes. The Piala Tribe provided written response, which typically identified warrior as a specifically identified warrior as an offensive term. Additionally, we reviewed all school names and mascots, as well as identified Native American imagery. And names for review for removal. Clover Park High School's mascot name Warrior was determined to be an inappropriate mascot name. We also gathered input from various formats from our Native American rights holders, which included staff, students and families. From that, we reviewed and discussed this information and made a recommendation for the superintendent's review. Some of the Native American imagery that was identified at Clover Park High School included the totem poles painting of Native Americans. A stained glass window. A logo on the gymnasium floor, internal and external signage in the school. School uniforms and athletic equipment, signage on the archway leading to the school, signage at Harry Lang Stadium and more. The district is in the process of developing a plan and budget to remove the imagery. The district will remove the, will begin the removal process immediately and apply for a grant from OSPI this winter. Expecting this grant to be offered this February to help reimburse the cost to replace the items. The committee also sought to gather input from local tribes. American and Native American staff, students and families by having a virtual rights holder meeting and conducting student focus group sessions. And virtual survey. These input sessions confirmed that most concur that the current school's mascot name was disrespectful, inappropriate and offensive. In addition to listening to our rights holders, it was also an opportunity to begin building a stronger relation. With our Native American students, staff and families. In light of recent legislation and written response from the Piala Tribe and feedback from the Native American rights holders in our district. We recommended the district remove inappropriate names and imagery of Native Americans at Clover Park High School. Our next steps included Clover Park High School, leading a committee to identify a new mascot. Remove Native American objects and imagery from the school. As I mentioned, we will also apply for a grant to help reimburse for this cost associated with the changing to a new mascot. And complete the transition process by the end of the school year, removing all imagery and replaced with new mascot and logo.
Clover Park High School has begun the process of identifying a new mascot by December thirty-first. To comply with the new legislation. They've assembled a committee led by Principal Stoltz that includes administration. Staff and students to facilitate the work. They've identified a thoughtful process to gather student, staff, family. Alumni and community input in the mascot selection. So staff, students and family have been informed of the mascot change and the opportunity to provide input into the selection of the new mascot. And their goal is um, leading this process well and um. Ensuring that the change of mascot um, is not going to change the school community, but it's going to positively reflect the values of the school. And help ensure that they create an environment for which they are proud. So in the event typically. For naming a new school or facility as Assistant Superintendent Ikada mentioned, um, we typically follow the Board. Uh, Policy sixty-nine seventy for naming schools and facilities. And examples of that include when we uh, named Dr. Claudia Thomas Middle School and then um. Before that, it would have been some of the elementary schools on base. So typically, the school principal leads the process of identifying the school mascot. So they have identified. A process and timeline as follows, and it's on the screen, is that the community, co, committee, excuse me, is going to gather student and staff. Input through an online survey, and they've identified eight mascots. Uh, for input along with an option for individuals to identify something else if they have a different suggestion. They would also provide the rationale for that. Then um, they're going to gather the input between November twenty-second and twenty-ninth. The committee will come back together, review all of that input, and they're going to select the top three um, mascot suggestions. They will um, in early December, launch an online survey that would go to families, alumni and community. To provide their input. Then the committee will come back, review that input. And give another opportunity for students to provide additional input, and that is on December eighth. Through uh, student advisory. So there's three opportunities for input um, from our stakeholders. The committee will convene for the last and final time to review all of that input and make a final selection. So um, through the timeline, the um. The name selection would be provided uh, for the board at the December thirteen meeting and then shared more broadly. At uh, after December fourteenth. And the benefits of this is the timeline allows the school to involve stakeholders. And identify a new mascot that reflects the school community. And meet the legislative requirements. And as Assistant Superintendent uh, Ikada mentioned. It allows the school to continue to use materials, uniform. Equipment, you name it, with the current mascot name and logo while we transition to the new mascot. And we greatly appreciate Principal Stoltz's leadership uh, on this process.
And that is our presentation. Are there any questions?
Thank you very much again for a comprehensive um, presentation. We really did appreciate it. Paul, I noticed that you had your hand up, so go ahead and speak first, please.
Yeah, I, I, I agree. It was a good presentation. Thank you. I, I do have one question on the, the word warriors. Is warriors going to go away?
Yes.
Yes.
Now, what was the logic behind that? Everything else made sense except that.
One of the reasons is uh, feedback from the Piala Tribe uh. Indicated that the Warriors was offensive. And when we polled our rights holders and our parents and students, they also felt it was offensive. That we could not, because I think uh. Uh, Clover Park was uh, started as the home of the Warriors. It, and it was associated with Native American figures and things, they cannot dis, disassociate the name Warrior. From the Native American uh, image and history. And that is why um. That's one of the main reasons for eliminating Warrior.
But, but we're a military community and mo, most, most of our military people are referred to as Warriors. You, you go to the service academies and they, you know, they're, they're a tool for uh, leading leadership Warriors. And so I, I, you know, have we, have we checked with the people? At uh, JBLM and to see where that is, because I, I, you know, being retired military, I'm going, woo.
Yeah.
Everything else made sense except that.
You are totally right, because we, you know, the warrior can be uh, can be any culture, any leader, anybody, the expansion of, of the warrior. It's just not isolated. But when we look at the history, the images, the figures, it always, in Clover Park's case, it always related to Native American. And uh, that is why um, we could not disassociate the feedback from our rights holders. We could not. Disassociate uh, the warrior from Clover Park as, as not being associated with Native American culture and images.
Another thing.
Kevin, if I, Kevin, if I understood your report correctly. I felt like in your report, you stated that the Piala Tribe said that they themselves found it defensive. So it wasn't an objective thing on our side. It was the native community saying that this is what their expectations were. And in order for us to comply with the state standard of changing the name of the mascot.
And to be clear too, the state standard is that um, we had to consult with the Piala Tribe. And uh, to get their permission to keep the Warriors. And their, their answer was no.
Carol, go ahead. Carol, go ahead.
Sometimes a historical aspect of the things, I don't think there's any board members who are sitting on the board now who. Hutloch, when it was in the junior high days, they were the Indians. And the name was changed to the Hutloch Hurricanes. And it's interesting how once the change is made, there really is, it, it moves on. And the reality is this, this is just like wearing a mask. This is a law. We are following the law and having to do this. I have always been, I will admit, I've always been impressed with when you walk into Clover Park and you see their beautiful mural. That's in the comments there and, and it shows lots, you know, the Warriors and it showed, you know, Gandhi and Claire Martin and. Mother Teresa and, and Rosa Parks. So, I, I agree with Paul, there are, and I agree with you, we are, we are a military community. And I know that our military people are considered Warriors, but we do have to follow the law and that's paramount to how we move this forward. By the very fact that they have comprehensively taken the surveys. This is not just being done in a silo, it's not being done by just a small group of people that this is. You know, change is hard, change is hard and Warrior, you know, Clover Park people are, are, are very loyal. Alumni are very loyal to their school and they grew up with that and, you know, that's what many of them have been. And so, we're just going to have to, have to accept the change and, and. Assume and presume that the next mascot who will be chosen by the students and the parents and staff and, and community input. Will be done with clear conscience and it will be the right thing to do.
Thank you.
If there are no further comments, I'm looking. We will move forward with our meeting tonight. Superintendent Banner, is there any other area that you want to share under Superintendent Reports?
No, I had some things I wanted to jump in and I was actually really pleased that other folks were thinking along the same lines. And so, I do appreciate that. And you know, while it is the letter of the law. It's also us reaching out to the rights holders that are impacted by the imagery, etc. And I think there was a comprehensive process. And so, I do again appreciate both Assistant Superintendent Decata and Director Albrecht. Who led the effort along with several of our other administrators and the committee members. And that concludes the district's reports for this evening.
Fantastic. I want to conclude tonight's meeting by letting the board know that there will not be an executive session this evening. And so, in a moment, we will adjourn. I wanted to make sure that the board was up to speed on the fact that. December thirteenth will be an opportunity for us to have a new board director. And that's really an exciting opportunity for us as a board to be able to grow. I've reached out to Dave Anderson, who the voters selected and acknowledged that he has this opportunity to come in and. And make an impact on our district. So, he's responded back very affirming as well. And so, I'm, I'm wanting to acknowledge that we have an exciting opportunity in our next meeting to be able to. Have a new board director come in and be a part of the Clover Park School District. So, that's exciting. He was very gracious in responding to my acknowledgement of his victory as well. So, it, it's a good thing for us to be able to have this opportunity coming forward. Just want to acknowledge that. And so, if there are not any other further comments, I'm going to look for a me, I mean, a motion to adjourn. Paul, are you making a motion to adjourn?
Oh, I just got a comment. The, we, we talked a little bit about, or two years ago when we had the swearing in. We didn't have a judge available to us. I just want to share that there is a judge available if the district needs it.
Yep, Paul, we've already taken care of that and so, there is a judge that will be available. Correct. And me, is there any other comments or a motion to adjourn? You have two options. Then I would like for somebody to make a motion to adjourn because as much as I like you guys, I'd like to be able to move on with our evening and let our community do the same. Motion made by Anthony, is there a second? Maybe Carol, those favor in a journey at, what time is it? Seven oh six, please raise your right hand. And then motion carries unanimously will adjourn. Board directors, thank you very much. Community, thank you as well. Superintendent Banner, once again, your staff did an amazing job of our school reports. Thank you for all the hard work that you guys do.